Good Chris.
Morning everyone, we'll talk over the November fourth meeting of the Madison County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chris Boss, if everybody could introduce themselves.
Tony Sinivas.
Rob Swain.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Brandon Scher.
Rob Swain.
John Swain, Chair.
Rhonda Maynard, Assistant Mayor.
Kevin Weaver with the Engineers Office.
Amy Reese, Clerk.
We should have received a copy of last week's meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes, dispense with their reading.
Second.
Well, first and a second, any other discussion? Here none, roll call please.
Mr. Scher.
Yes.
Dr. Sinivas.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
I'm explaining, would you like to start us, sir?
Good morning.
Morning.
I had much to. For your gentlemen this morning, we're steadily busy at Sheriff's Office, working on some online games. We had a very interesting case finished up last week in common police court. One of our undercover agents that was part of a drug sentencing after twenty years from Chris. Some good work, still working hard. I will not be next week's meeting, next week's meeting, I will be up in Sandusky at the Sheriff's Annual Conference. So I don't anticipate any items of business for that next meeting. If I do, I'll explain to them, make sure Amy gets it. The only item of business, small item that we should cover later this morning, is just an adjustment of the lines. Our contractual line suffered, it's not a line that we've always done. This is something that even since we've been here to pay the bills off, I think he's been sort of paying on the fines. So still educating myself of what needs to be budgeted out there. But I think the adjustment we have should give us. Other than that, you gentlemen have any of me this morning?
They did not, thank you sir, appreciate it. Go to Engineers Office.
Sure, thank you very much. Just want to make sure everybody's aware that we return to our five daily schedule this week. So we're seven thirty to three thirty through March, probably, I'm just guessing. Yet at this point, we got a normal winter schedule. Big plans for the little paving, intermediate course has been completed. We're accepting right around the bridges, which will be done with the bridges themselves. The bridge out by the county line is the one we're working on. And that one will be completed a little bit later than we had hoped. Just the first week of December is what the schedule was to open that one. And the one that the contractor's working on over Deer Creek just used to play around is scheduled for December nineteenth. They had a manufacturer's issue with material availability that caused the beams to be significantly later than they had hoped. But they're making good progress at this point and we'll be ready for the beams and they're delivered in about two weeks. And yeah, that's it for today.
Very good, thank you sir, appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah.
Put you on the spot for just a second, ask you a question. So, and I called them all yesterday, but I didn't. Left them a message, she got back to me last night and couldn't get through her, so I said I'd call her today. So Darby Township, the comprehensive plan, she met with Dennis and gave him a map and ended up giving him, I think, some shade files on maybe a land use plan that you guys have worked on with her.
Yeah.
And she said that you guys wanted that to match up with our comp plan or change the content.
Two different colors.
Well, there's total, I mean, we're talking about kind of apples and oranges with things. Like we have our land use, preferred land use designations, and they're called certain things. And that's for every township in the county except for Somerford. So, we can't really.
So I see what, I think I see what you're getting to. So then if yours bad comes to matching ours, then it mismatches with everyone else.
Yeah, you would be totally different than anybody else in the county.
Let me talk to Holly.
Well, I'm supposed to call her today because I don't know if that was what you intended to do or not, or if it was just like.
We didn't think about that.
You're, you know, because you may call it one thing or have a category or designation that includes a couple of different things where we have totally different designations codes for all of this.
We better talk with her at eleven on this meeting. And I could bring that up to her and tell her what your challenge was. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, and if that was what the initial attention was, or Dennis got confused, or.
No, he was preferring yours to come to ours.
Which I mean, we can.
But if, but if it messes everything else up.
Yeah. You know, for like, an example might be light industrial, right? And what you consider, what she's considering light industrial may be different than what we're considering light industrial. You know, or maybe yours is just industrial, you know, where we have like, you know, manufacturing, you know.
We should maybe talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah. Or the other option is, and I don't want to say this is a nuclear option, but you can do your own comp plan, which would then lead to your own zoning, which then kind of sort of enforcement, code enforcement person working for you, you know, just like. Now, you know, you have to go to the ballot and so forth and so on, I think that would.
Yeah, that, I think, came into net.
But I just, today I think that. I think so too. So my recommendation would be, you could say, okay, here's your, kind of your land use plan. How do, what categories match up, what categories don't, and can you live with the counties?
That's a good question.
I thought it's what ultimately it's going to have to be because of the.
We'll, we'll talk on eleven on this meeting and I'll, I'll bring that to her attention. She had my notebook with me right now. But yeah, I'll tell her there's some challenges and you're going to talk with her.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll just, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, we just got a lot of apples and oranges in there.
Yeah, we had to add one apple and orange, even if it's fairly made, that one farmer that we have that have centuries. Farmers that.
So you did change, you did want to change that?
What's that?
You did want to change that back to ag?
They were very resistant to having, we almost had to add a color to accommodate them. Because they were so, I mean. Their trust factor of what we were trying to accomplish was.
Yeah, I didn't know you were talking to, I tried to explain the processes, but it wasn't.
No, no. The lady's father that I talked with, he could take in what we were saying.
Yeah.
But the ones living on the farm could not.
Yeah, because everything, keep in mind, is for rezoning of a property. You look back at the comp plan and say, what's a preferred use and does that allow for rezoning? So we, you know what I mean? We're using like two different.
Is it possible for that centuries old farm to add a color matter for, why not?
Not in our comp plan, I mean, we have to, it'd just be a total. I don't know what it accomplishes by adding more complexity to the document.
Well, it accommodates them because they're resistant to add. They're going to fight us, they're going to fight us, I mean, they get very verbal in the community.
Yeah, and we have what, fifty thousand parcels, you know.
I understand, is there some way to add a color for like to accommodate centuries old?
I mean, if the commissioners want to add.
That's just the question, because they're fighting us. Yeah, it gets, it got really warm.
I mean, the easiest answer would be just to say, okay, you're going to prefer use, it's going to be ag and the comp plan, even though it looks like spots, I mean. But that would be the easiest answer, like, hey, we're not going to make, we're not going to say that's preferred commercial or whatever it was.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying, if it's just one parcel. It, I guess what I'm asking.
Because it went from ag to commercial maybe, and that's where they're having issues? So you can say, no, we prefer it to be ag.
They wanted it barbed raft specifically.
Well, I mean, you could in a plan that you guys use as a guiding document and reference and so forth and so on. You can do whatever you want with that, you could add colors, designation codes and so forth and so on. But this is a county wide.
I understand, but if, since there's not many centuries old farms, is there a possibility to add a combination for that color just to make it peaceful?
So if you add it, we need to come up with language to support whatever the code is and whatever.
I'll talk to her about that and say that's the bit.
And what does it mean?
Yeah, yeah, boy, they were resistant, yeah. We met them, with them personally.
Yeah, so what does, you know, a century old farm mean? Does that mean it can never be rezoned from ag to something else? I, it's.
What we were trying to do is for it to accommodate.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, does that make sense?
It does, at the end of the day, you know, you have the, well, ultimately, the county commissioners.
You guys all know which parcel.
The authority at the end.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
You know.
I'll talk with her, we'll talk at rings.
Yeah, because we hate to. Yeah, we want to get that hammered out and we were working on it Friday and yesterday. It was like, oh, I see what's going on now. I wasn't, you know, boots on the ground with it, so the team sent it over to me and I'm like, oh yeah, we can't. This isn't going to work, so I need to figure out, talk to you guys and say, hey, what are you trying to accomplish? And, you know, ultimately.
We're trying to accomplish where Darby Town, where we're hearing the people.
But it needs to be accomplished through the codes that are already defined, land use codes that are already defined.
We're trying to do that.
Yeah.
We're trying to do that, yeah.
Yeah, before.
Roger has been very, our chairman, he's been very vocal and supportive of, hey, let's leave things with the county. You know, let's work with the county, you guys have worked with us.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and so, no. We'll, we'll talk and we'll see what, what we need to do properly.
Yeah.
As assumed, we can't just talk about it, go to this table for next morning.
Yeah, like Somerford, for example, they do their own comp plan and then they have their own zoning and they have their own zoning enforcement, they're the township in the county. But what they did was, they took the county comp plan and said, that's our comp plan that we had already set up for Somerford, so they just.
So they had.
Recycled ours and maybe made a couple of small changes. They had one or two parcels there, seventy and fifty six.
Okay.
So.
When you talked about if we would have to do our own zoning if there's absolutely no way. What would that do between the township and the county?
Well, the way we've approached it thus far with Canyon Township is if you want your own zoning, then you have, need to have your own code enforcement officer. You need to have your own administrative staff, you need to do everything. Being a county is not going to do the work for you.
Yeah, how about, obviously, we're actually in our meeting there, but this is called answering questions.
I think that would still be all right. I don't want to speak for them, but.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that goes into that.
Well, sure.
And so I understood when Roger says, hey, let's not read the menu.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think you can accomplish what you're, the picture and the planning with our designations.
Would hurt if you just want to look at it.
If they're so resistant to this, how pickled would the key on establishing a land use code of country?
Yeah, well, now, I said nine thirty, so we've never, we've never created so on.
Yes.
So, and then again, it would be up to the board to.
Yeah.
Provide approval of a new land use code, preferred land use.
For centuries old, yeah.
But I think the key is, what does that actually mean? Like, it's in the title, right, it's a three year farm, but what does it stand for that? What, how does it impact zoning? Is it, it can never be rezoned, it can be rezoned to anything or anything in between?
They would like, they would like to have that it can never be zoned, I think. But I'm not, I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced that they're going to feel that way in twenty years.
And they're the landowner, so if they don't want it rezoned, it doesn't get rezoned, bottom line. Only it gets rezoned if the landowner files an application for rezoning. And that's what you have to stress to them. It will never, ever, ever, ever be rezoned unless they file an application for it to be rezoned.
We have done that.
I know.
But I have the concept.
I know, they can't spot zone, we can't just go around spot zoning because people don't necessarily understand that concept. Oh, I have the concept, I know exactly. Yeah, I know who they are, but like, we can't just go around spot zoning because, you know, the lack of understanding. It will never be rezoned, it can be a farm for the next one hundred years or more if no one files an application to rezone the property. No one is telling them what to do with their property, what to sell their property to a developer. No one is saying that whatsoever.
I understand that fully, but what I'm saying is they wanted to never, ever, ever. I'm not convinced that they're going to feel that way in twenty years.
Well, they could also, they could also go with, and talk to soil and water and see if they'll, I mean, they could apply for that. For.
An amusement?
Yeah, the preservation.
Well, if they took the criteria, they could, but I.
We believe that they.
I know a centuries old farm that's eight acres, eight.
Could they lock it up in a trust or something?
Absolutely, we could do it.
Yeah, that would be mine.
And do it in a trust.
Yeah.
Where no one in the family or could ever sell it, nobody could ever do anything with it versus relying on the county. But they still don't understand that it's a planning tool and it can't force. They see the map and they freak out.
I'll talk to them again, I told them I would follow up with them anyway, I'm happy to talk to them. It probably won't help, but it's a tool, it's a land use planning tool, no one is forced in anybody's hand. You don't have to do anything with respect to your property. The county, no, the township, no one is making them sell, no one is making them rezone, it's that simple.
What made them really resistant is when the guy that is now their neighbor south, just north of them. Showed his perspective map and what he plans for the future from that area. And he plopped it down on their table and he said, this is what my plans are for your farm. And that went over like.
They can tell them to pounce there.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
And hopefully they did, they did, but they're, they're, right now, they're very, they're not convinced they can trust anybody. Is the feeling I get.
We don't, we don't sell to the developer, we don't file the application, so they have to trust themselves. Because it's their decision, not anyone else's. So if they don't trust, they don't trust their, you know, themselves, I guess. Because no one can force them to file a rezoning, no one can force them to sell to a developer. And if you start changing singular parcels that are within a defined group, you know, growth area, now you're kind of spot zoning.
What we were trying to work on is that being able to move forward with what we're trying to do and accommodate them with their viewpoints.
Maybe we should call it spot planning rather than spot zoning because.
Well, with the comp plan, that would probably be more.
We're not changing the zoning, so I can see why people get confused because we call it spot zoning, but we're not changing the zoning.
Yeah, so it's spot planning and then spot zoning, that's a good point.
What are the challenges?
Very good, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Do you like to continue the meeting?
I do, the majority of my business information is a ten thirty executive session. But until then, I do have electric activation program update. I think I sent you guys probably three or four emails last week on, with different information. Trying to explain the program benefits. I did a little bit more research yesterday. I did, you know, find out that forty five counties in the state have an irrigation program. Twenty five of those counties use Palmer, the other twenty have their own energy consultants. I'm aware of Palmer, I would assume. Unless they take it all in-house and put it out to bid and so forth and so on, so, but I, you know, I think that's unlikely. So, I mean, other than that, we are receiving calls and emails with people that are angry that they don't understand the program and the process and, you know, basically, how could the commissioners just automatically do this? We provide the information that it was approved by the voters of Madison County in either twenty ten or twenty eleven. Went through the program, you know, it's been advantageous up until this year. You know, where that savings margin is as much thinner than it was in years past when compared to the, to the market rate and, you know, even thinner non-existent when you look at third parties out there. Third party suppliers that are, you know, emails, mail, door to door, phone calls, you know, so forth and so on. And sometimes those are legit and sometimes there's some strings that are attached.
You said people are mad that the commissioners can just, just do this, what does that mean?
So the piece, the sticking point with them is that they have to opt out of the program. So, from what I understand, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, you could choose an opt-in or opt-out way of doing things. At that point in time, commissioners chose an opt-in and I totally making assumptions here, but, you know, to impact the largest, greatest member of residents because they didn't have to do any legwork on their own, they don't have to remember when third party agreements. And to renegotiate, to renew, so forth and so on, where the, you know, that's what that automatically opt-in does. So they would still receive savings from market value for the greatest number of people, I'm assuming. But, you know, that was, went to the ballot, that was approved and we've been in the program ever since then.
So the opt-in, or rather, the opt-out requirement, that was as part, that was part of the ballot initiative?
That is my understanding, but it's not here to confirm.
Yeah, so we don't know if we could change that, if we could make it an opt-in rather than an opt-out.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, it's actually sixty five counties that participate, not forty five.
Oh, okay, when I look at CCAO's, I see website, it said.
What they sent us said sixty five.
Oh, okay, oh yeah, in the savings, right.
Yeah.
The report.
That was a significant number. I think the, the information that's been added to, to our website is, is very comprehensive. It's very clear and I think that's.
Thank you.
That's great, so I hope, are you referring people to that?
I am.
Have you gotten any positive feedback on that?
Yeah, and I have got positive feedback and a few people, we've referred directly to Palmer Energy, which they have a very lengthy email to provide to them with explanations, which satisfies most.
Yeah.
There's still a handful of people, small, very small number, that are unsatisfied.
Yeah, and I, I give them a few calls about this and most of the time, once I explain the program and the fact that they can opt out and it's, we're trying to provide something that's, you know, an additional, you know, option, choice for them and some competition into the market, I think people understand that.
I think the.
What is the main, I mean, what are the people that are angry and what's the main thing that they have to opt out?
That, yes, that is, they have to opt out and it appears shady because it's, you know, the only one to benefit is Palmer Energy, which then I explain is a bid process, you know.
That was a shady, because I don't know.
That's just the mentality of a lot of people these days with government, you know, it's like, okay, we're finally business to Palmer, you know, by automatically doing this where they have to opt out. Half of, half people don't know that they have to opt out and, you know, just throw the stuff on the wall and see what sticks. But, you know, when I explain, it's a competitive process. And Palmer was the only, at this point in time, the only company that provided pricing. And I went back three, a year ago, we only had two companies. So out, throughout time, the number of companies that have provided pricing has decreased. Like that first year, we had, I think, five or six different companies and it's just gradually gotten smaller over time. And once they understand that, then it's like, oh, okay, because I can provide that RFP to them. It says, like, you know, here it is, this is what we had.
Yeah, the people I talked to, that's enough explained to them, and they go to the market with a request for proposal and solicit proposals to provide this rate, it's not just, you know, made up. When they go to the market to try and get a rate for Madison County residents that is competitive and maybe now it's not as competitive as it, as it used to be, there's, you know, maybe a better option for residents, that's what I told.
It's not a first energy.
Yeah.
There also failed out in a situation, so Sammer and Dazo and usual, you know, all that stuff, so. Yeah, I, I would say ninety per, ninety-five percent of the folks are satisfied after we have a few different conversations.
Yeah, so the people I talked to have been angry, it's more of this questions about the program.
Last couple of people have been very angry. But again, you're talking to your three people out of fifty thousand.
Do you keep a log of these types of calls to?
Also a bit, have been through email, so of course, lives are public record. Phone calls, I haven't been logging those, but I certainly can.
Okay, I think it would be helpful for something like this. On the one year versus the three or longer year lock-in, the, the explanation that they provided, they seem to acknowledge that you could have a higher rate next year, but they were, they were kind of making a marketing pitch that if you go with something that's slightly lower now, maybe more people will keep it rather than if you lock in a slightly higher rate for three years. And that's really, that's a fine line because it's not much of an increase. So the idea that people would say, oh, well, this, you know, they would know that if it was just a little bit higher, that's no good, but I'll accept the one unit, I don't know. So I, I think this is worth further discussion next year when it comes time to deciding a one or a three year term. Because there, there wasn't anything compelling saying that we think it'll be lower, I didn't, I didn't see that.
I think it was a, a hope and the spirit of the program. Should I point, it's about it, but certainly in October, September, October of next year, we can dive deep into this. And with the, with the sixty five counties, where did you find that at?
Yeah, that was on the, your email from Wednesday, the twenty ninth. It's CCAO Electric Program Update from ten fifteen. And it says, yeah, it's from, it's dated October fifteenth, sixty five counties are participating.
Yeah, I got, I got the forty five from PUCO, so I'll, I'll just reject the PUCO and say, hey, by the way, I found one some. You might update the, your website, so. And so I have until ten thirty.
Very good.
Unless you have any, any other questions, concerns.
It's time, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, if you would, please.
If you, if you would, please.
A resolution approving the payment and invoices for Madison County.
Subway.
Second.
The first and second, any other discussion?
Does that include your lovely dog?
Yeah. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving travel for Wallace Lane to attend the County Commissioners Association Ohio Winter Conference.
Subway, good. The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving change order number one for the Madison County twenty twenty four CDBG Plain City ADA Improvement Project.
Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution appointing Christie East to the Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Subway, second. The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution appointing Suzie Taylor to the Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Subway.
Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
This one is, uh, for lack of clearance, um, and decided on the funding amount that you would like to if any, donate to them.
So I would move to approve this resolution with twenty five thousand.
I'm stuck. The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
If you get a phone call and.
I would make him aware of the situation.
Sure.
He's not getting any money from the senior center. He's only getting money from us. It was, it's been getting money from us and now we're giving them additional funds.
Amen.
I think I do need to follow up because he thought that they were, I think, a long rivalry um, this started, they were getting someone from the senior center, but that was stopped in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. A resolution accepting the preliminary assessments and approving the mailing of notice for the Glazer on Level Number Five Extension.
Subway.
Second.
The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a fund adjustment for the Madison County Sheriff's Office.
Subway, second. First and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
I don't know if you wanted to table this one or further information, a resolution of authorizing the payment of prior year bank fees from the commissioners of other expense line.
I mean, I'm not happy about it, but it sounds like we owe it. And I think the treasurer needs to work at, you know, and she did, she said we wouldn't be charged that again, so I'm good to go ahead and approve that.
Second. Oh, was that a motion, second?
It was, it was motion, yeah. I said move to approve.
Thank you for your motion.
Thank you so much.
The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sorry.
A resolution increasing appropriations sitting municipal court interpreter's witness line.
Subway, second. The first and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers? Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution, amending resolution number four, four twenty five and designating the Madison County Land Bank as a lead entity for the building demolition and site revitalization program.
Subway.
Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snickers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Tony Montrose has a PowerPoint presentation, spreadsheet, a little bummer, big screen.
Remind with the recess, we do have things to talk about.
Please.